When did he pass away? It was Saturday.
Oh, I have it.
Friday.
But here's the.
We have a quorum. Let me, I wanted to bring to your attention the passing of a gentleman, Steve Martin, who served the city of Vero Beach 37 years on the Marine Commission. Passed away Friday, I think it was. I want to pass on the sad news of one of our trusted and valued instructors, Steve Martin. He was with the Sailing, Youth Sailing Organization. We worked together this past week and Friday, he volunteered to bring his personal boat to Youth Sailing, to use in the Sunday classes. Steve was at the launch ramp, preparing to put his boat in the water, and he had a fatal heart attack and passed away doing what he loved best, sailing. This guy, I don't know how many years I've known him, but this guy was a special person. And if he would, if you would keep him in your prayers, we would certainly appreciate it. His family needs your prayers. Very, very nice gentleman. Let's go to the public comment. Anybody in the public would like to speak to the council at this time, come forward.
I see one.
Except. Good evening. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. I've never seen so many Clemson fans.
Ooh.
That's right. That's Tennessee.
That's the same color, yeah. Yep, that's right. My daughter went to Clemson for the first two years.
That was a great school. Airshow is coming up, less than two and a half weeks from now. We are going to have an airshow here. It's the 75th anniversary of the naval training base. Most people know that there was a Navy training base here because of the Heritage Center. What most people don't know is 106 people gave their lives learning how to fly. I don't know if that's an indictment of naval aircraft or what, but there's a plaque out at the airport that shows that, and we're going to commemorate that. In conjunction with that, we're having this airshow, and as you know, sequesters hit everybody. The good news is, we didn't have anything major scheduled other than the Golden Knights, which is the Army team that jumps out of perfectly good airplanes. And they do it very well, they do it very often. And then we had an F-18, which is the Navy airplane, that was going to make a high-speed pass and be a static display. So we didn't lose a whole lot. What we have had to do, however, is go out and find acts that we can fill up about three, three and a half hours, and we got some really good ones. We are blessed to have the Three Exchange Clubs of Vero Beach. They invited my organizations in, the Veterans Council, and I've been working with them about eight, nine months. How they put together this thing is beyond me. It was, there's only half a dozen people on the entire Board of Directors, and they've done it all themselves. And they deserve all the kudos in the world. So when you see them, they're all going to be wearing shirts like this on the 5th and 6th of October. Tell them thanks for a great job. On the Mother's Day weekend, 2014, we have the Blue Angels. They are guaranteed to be here. They have moved money around, both A and the Thunderbirds, the Air Force team, have moved money around, so they will complete their schedule. They will not start their fiscal year, they'll start calendar year, so January of next year they'll start flying again. When the announcement was made in Las Vegas that the Blue Angels were coming to Vero Beach, you can imagine, people went, "Where is Vero Beach?" It says 33 miles from Yee Haw Junction. So we did get the, we did get the Blue Angels, and there's a saying that is not who you know, it's who knows you. And that's how we got the Blue Angels. So we are really proud of it. This is a warm-up for it. You're going to see a lot of folks in action. I want to thank you beforehand for volunteering to park cars for the council. I think that's really nice, you would do that. You did that on the website, it's www.veroairshow.com. Get your tickets in advance at the air, so you'll make life a lot easier for you when you come. If you want preferred parking, it's an extra $5. The whole thing is going to cost $20. For veterans, veterans have a special deal that we've set up for them. They get their tickets through the Victory Center, a military store in the mall. It's $10, you have to show proof that you're a veteran. Battle scars and big talk, don't do it. But we are looking forward to it. We think it's going to be a great time. We've got concessions that are there. We've got lemonade stands, we've got beer trucks, Vietnam veterans are running those. Lots of things going on. There's things for kids there, we're going to have bounce houses, things like that for the kids. So there's a lot going on. We have an antique car show, there should be about 50 cars there each day, because it's a fairly long walk from where the cars are going to be parked. You're going to see both the Sebastian and the Vero JROTC out there in uniform directing traffic. Those kids are really good at it, they've been doing it. We didn't have to tell them what to do, all we said is, "Here's the area you're going to handle, and here's the 6,000 cars that are going to park there." Preferred parking, there's, is going to be closer, obviously, to the airport, to the center of the main stage. So we look forward to it. I've got a poster that we're passing out to organizations. I would hope you would put this in the window.
Do you do that?
Looks a lot like that, and I would like to present this to the council.
You bet. We'll put that on the front door.
I have two questions. Will there be bleachers, or should people bring lawn chairs?
There will be bleachers. Sort of.
Enough to fit 6,000 people?
Sort of. Sort of. They are not bleachers for everyone. The best thing I would suggest to do is go onto the website, and it tells you exactly what you can and can't do. We have a thing called Frequently Asked Questions, that's one of them, as to what you can and can't do. Anything else?
Are you still looking for volunteers?
Absolutely. We need 400 volunteers.
Wow.
And this is, like I said, this is just a warm-up. We've got, the veterans organizations are all participating in it, we're volunteering. We have put money where our mouth is, we've put $5,000 in there, that's going to pay for, you know, we have to pay for everything. They come to visit, they want to do a static display, they'll be happy to do it as long as you'll pay for the gas. $8 a gallon for gas, so not cheap. But we're working at it, and we've done very, very well for the first time. We haven't had an airshow here since 1995. So we hope this is a start of tradition. If it goes well this time, it'll go well for the Blue Angels. The Blue Angels go well, Thunderbirds are next, because those folks do talk to each other. And we know how to entertain. We've got some great places here. And if you want something for Mother's Day to dazzle your mother, your wife with, get tickets for the Blue Angels.
Great. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
You want to leave that on that table there, and we'll.
Well, indeed. I was going to autograph it for you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public would like to speak to the council, please come forward. And your name and address, please, sir.
Sir, hi, Eric Tumso, 1351 White Hare Lane, Vero Beach. Hi, how's everyone doing? As you know, I'm the, or you might not know, I'm the president of the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association. I'm also, shame's a plug, I'm Mr. August. Lifeguard calendar that we have, we're sold out unfortunately, but we're getting new ones for 2014, so get your copy November.
Will you sign those?
Of course. $5 donation will go right to VBLA.
All right.
We want to thank, VBLA would like to thank the council for voting five to zero to fund guarded beaches this past fiscal year. Pilar, thank you very much for coming to our event again this year, and Rob, thank you very much for coming. We've had a lot of great events, and all the, everyone else who showed up, we really appreciate that. And we want to acknowledge your vision and your common sense by keeping beaches guarded. So far this year, we've had 61 rescues, which dwarfs last year's, a lot of rip currents out there. You know, people always ask me, you know, about the shark attack, you know, what happened? Were you scared? You know, I wasn't scared. I mean, we're there for a reason, we train for this kind of thing to happen. But what does scare us is the potential for unguarded beaches. Majority of the people that we go out after are visitors from the, you know, out-of-towners. The majority of the people who come to the beach are not from this town, so they understand the inherent risks out there. So for us to be out there is huge. Brevard County, a few years ago, they experimented by taking guards off the beach, and it posed a lot of tragedies. They had, I think, nine drownings in one year, so it didn't go well. Not that we can guarantee that there's always going to be, we're always going to have safe days out there, but I can guarantee you this, that if guards aren't out there, then there will be major accidents happening. So we do appreciate your support. You know, some days, we, when we close at 3:00 at Homestead, we see 300 people, mostly out-of-towners on the beach that we leave every day. So that causes anxiety, that's a little scary for us. So once again, we appreciate your support, and the Vero Beach Lifeguard Association would publicly support the things that Rob Slezek and the Recreation Department are suggesting, with the hot dog sales, the umbrella, and beach rentals, the advertisements on guard towers. You know, because when you think a bit, we get questions all the time about, you know, where do we go to eat? Where can we get umbrellas and chairs? I mean, this stuff is already happening. Every other umbrella, every other chair, every other blanket, every other t-shirt already has a logo on it. I mean, I'm advertising VBLA. Pilar, you probably have Manolo shoes on, you're advertising. So we're already doing it, so it's just a matter of, you know, if it means keeping funding for the lifeguards, then if it's done correctly and tastefully, we're all for it. So, you know, we want to keep Vero, Vero as well, so it's just a matter of keeping people safe. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you for the work you do. Anybody else like to speak to the council? Good evening.
Good evening.
And your name and, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Wesley Gensel. I'm here, my address, I'm sorry, is 800 Coquina Lane, Vero Beach, Florida. I'm here in favor of new sign ordinances that will allow advertising revenue from lifeguard tower ads. I think if it's done tastefully, like he mentioned, it certainly will bring revenue to the community. Private industry money via advertising on beach towers is a far better option than raising taxes. Private industry money is a far better option than lowering the safety standards of our beaches. Vero's beaches are a vital asset to our community, both in terms of tourism revenue and quality of life to our residents. Lifeguards and beach safety measures ensure that community residents and visitors alike are able to enjoy our beaches, and that Vero continues to see the revenue associated with our inherent beach culture. Allowing advertising on the towers supports our local businesses, both beachside and on the mainland, helping point the thousands of beach visitors towards the many offerings that Vero Beach has to offer. In summary, having a truly zero-cost revenue producer, like advertising, is a smart example of partnering with the private sector, ensuring that the future safety of our beach visitors by funding the Park and Recreation Department, and in turn, supporting our lifeguards. And more importantly, it shows fiscal responsibility to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to the council, please come forward.
Step machine on Tammy. The overhead.
Oh, not the overhead, but.
So all's left to do is put something on it. Pilar, the, Marty, Marty spoke, and reminded me of you. You were personally involved in an event when I was on City Council, and in fact, I think Tammy commandeered the trophy, and put it in the case out here. I would, I would argue, maybe since you paid for all the lobster, maybe, maybe, you know, the trophy should have gone to Pilar. But anyway, there's a 98-year-old vet that Marty has me taking care of, and he's, he's having trouble eating, and, you know, he's, he's not doing well. But anyway, he wanted soup. And you know what kind of soup he wanted, don't you?
Lobster bisque.
He wanted some lobster bisque. So he sent me a Bernie. And he sent, he sent me out, and I had to go, I had to go home, and I made him up.
Make your board win a lobster bisque.
I made him up a batch of lobster bisque, so anyway.
Any leftovers?
Any leftovers? So anyway, I won't mention his name, but there's a very famous gentleman in, in Vero Beach that's about 98 years old, who thanks Pilar Turner personally for the contribution that she made to his, to his gaining some strength back. And a couple of days later, he really did. He perked up, it was, it was pretty interesting. Anyway, I don't even know what that, what that one means. Somebody said something, and I have Jay and parade, but I don't know, I don't know what it was I was going to say now. I don't have to push any buttons or anything, Tammy. You're the button pusher up there?
Yeah.
Anyway, at the last meeting, there's a, there's a gentleman in the, in the back corner here, and at the last meeting, he and I had a, an encounter, and he's one of Vero Beach's finest, and, and there's his picture. Now, maybe if I move it up a little bit. Yeah, you can, you can see it there. He was called up to remove me from chambers. And it's interesting, because not one City Council member objected to me being removed. And I'd like to, at this time, ask any council member if they can tell me what part of the Constitution of these United States says that you can't use certain people's names? What provides to certain council members some privileges that no other council members have? And if a council member, I'm not going to mention her name, it's not you, Pilar. I was told after a meeting that I would refer to her as the aforementioned. Don't say Tracy Carroll, just say the aforementioned. Anyway, I was removed from the meeting, because the mayor said I was getting personal, I was making it personal. I was naming the council member that was charged with violations. And now I wrote a book, Liars, Cheats, and Thieves, and I used real names. And I think that if you come before the council and you use real names, that that's the right thing to do, so that you clearly identify who it is that you're talking about. And in fact, I guess I just got personal now with you before the, before I started in this, because you personally contributed, you know, to, to the lobster, and then the after effect was to, to have some positive effect on a very fine old gentleman, and that was very personal. It was out of your personal checkbook. It didn't cost the city anything for the city to enter that contest and win. But anyway, after the meeting, I had council members that, that I spoke to, and they didn't think it was right. And I don't think that the officer in question, he probably, if he were to voice his opinion, he probably didn't think it was right, that he was directed to remove a member of the public. And it was reported in one of the local, local papers, that Mayor Craig Fletcher allowed Stradely to attack Kramer. That was okay, I guess, but maybe the mayor doesn't like Kramer. But when Carroll leaned over and suggested something to the mayor, the mayor ordered Hetty to be removed by a police officer. Well, a couple of things are wrong here in this picture. Number one, it's not against the law to mention names, it's not against the law to identify who was involved in code violations, it's not against the law to tell what council members are doing what. But you know what is against the law, Mr. Mayor? When the vice mayor reaches over and whispers something to you, that's a violation. It's a violation of sunshine law, and you can, your city attorney's sitting there, and I think that he'll tell you. The council members can't whisper things back and forth to each other up there, that you need to say things out loud to the public to hear. Is that, that's fairly accurate? City attorney's not going to say anything, he's not going to shake his head. Is that an accurate statement? If you say something back and forth on the council, aren't, isn't the public allowed to hear that?
I think if it's city business, yes.
Okay. Well, she reached over and said something to him, and then he ordered the police, that's city business, to remove me. So there's a clear violation. Maybe Councilmember Carroll cares to say what was she told the mayor? Maybe the mayor wants to say. Neither one want to say. Well, in the picture, you can see the police officer has a hold of my arm with one hand, the other hand's behind my back. And I remember at the time, got my arm, what's in my back? When the police officer has a hold of you by one arm, and something's in your back, ooh, what is that? What's in your back? Taser? What is in your back? His hand? What is it? Certainly, I have no way of knowing. I do know that I have a heart condition, and if it was a taser, it might as well be the gun. Taser someone with a heart condition, you'd probably kill them. So to what extent do council members allow the mayor to remove people? At what point do you council members decide that the Constitution of these United States is important, that respect for citizens is important, and that we certainly have freedom of speech and freedom to come and talk to not only you, but the public, and to identify council members that are involved in public wrongdoing? And for you all to sit silent, for all of you to sit silent during that, you know better than the mayor that committed the crime. You ought to be ashamed of yourself.
Good day.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak to the council at this time, please come He got you. Got to be quick.
Good evening. Paul Tepaldi, 1545 Wind Cove Road. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members, for today in regards to the vote for the advertising revenue being generated possibly with the city's Park and Rec Department as a beneficiary. Those who vote in favor vote to support not only the safety of our beaches, but the fiscal responsibility our citizens expect from council members. Every dollar that can be put back into the budget for our park and recreation is a dollar well-earned. With the support of our local businesses, we can have budgets that are healthy and secure from annual cutbacks. Our city beaches remain clean and free of garbage, in part due to the similar efforts that are already approved and undertaken on these very beaches. See the picture handout that's in front of you? Or coming in front of you?
Here they are.
This is an initiative that I wish was on all the beaches, that we were able to grab a garbage bag and clean up after ourselves, or when I go for my walk every morning on the beach, and I have my little Publix bag, I wish it was bigger, and those very bags do that job. And, and yet, they're sponsored by a business with a logo on them as well. So allowing businesses to sponsor our efforts to help keep our beaches clean is as important as allowing businesses to sponsor the safety of our beaches, and that's what this very vote today will do, in my opinion. I want to thank you again for your fiscal responsibility, and I want to thank you again for your vote in favor of this initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council?
While the member of the public is coming up, in that photograph, you can see one of the smoking debris butts, smoking cigarette butts, shark tanks, that was put up by a nonprofit in our community, and I just noticed that was in that picture as well.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members, Ken Dag, 1846, 21st Avenue. This is on the banner issue. You had talked about the banners going on the lifeguard stands. I think that's a great idea, because from what I'm understanding, those monies will be used to help support our lifeguards and keep them guarding our beaches, and possibly maybe extending our hours. Suggestion, on the banners that go on the lifeguard stands, maybe you could put at the bottom of the banner that the proceeds do go towards the lifeguards. It may stimulate more people to step up to the plate and maybe place ads. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak to the council, please come forward. Seeing no more, I'll close the public hearings. Anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Item 3, under Public Hearings.
3A, An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, providing for the code of the City of Vero Beach, to amend and add a new chapter 79 entitled, "Advertisements Based on Municipal Property," providing for the sale of advertising space on municipal property, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date requested by the Recreation Director.
Well, as you know, that the lifeguard stand is where this is directed, and we would draw up an RFP to meet that standard if this ordinance is passed. It's an enabling ordinance for us to do that.
Any comments from the council?
Yes, I have a comment. The statement that we need the funding to have the lifeguards is completely inaccurate. We will, and I will stand for fully funding the lifeguards, as we have in the past. It's the responsibility of the city to fund the lifeguards, not the responsibility of the lifeguards to fund themselves through commercial activity. I had misgivings about this before I got cited in one of the magazines about being right, and I've decided I was right. What I said was that we should table this and let this have a chance to settle and the public to understand it. Since that time, I've had an inordinate amount of comment from citizens who live beachside, who think this is rather tawdry, and we don't need to do this, and we have no financial reason to do this. This is just throwing a noodle up and seeing whether it sticks. Where does it begin? Where does it end? So the gentleman was up here before, was good enough to come see me yesterday, I told him how I felt about it. I, you know, one of the things I think is going to be interesting in the years ahead is with the economy coming back, we're going to see development in this town again, and development actually is a good thing. As a friend of mine pointed out, without development, we'd all be living in tents. But the question is, what's consistent with Article 3.1 of the Vision Plan? In other words, what kind of buildings, what height limits, what makes Vero Beach special? And to me, putting signs on things is contrary to. And to me, putting signs on things is contrary to 3.1 of the Vision Plan. It's an opinion. I stand by it, but I will vote no on this.
Next, yes.
If the city manager doesn't mind, I would like to ask a couple of questions of Mr. Sleazak.
Sure.
Rob?
And Eric, if you don't mind coming forward as well, I'd like both of you to weigh in on this issue. And I agree with you, Mr. Winger. At the budget we've just passed, we have funded the three lifeguard stations. Is that correct? We have within the city?
We, Rob Sleazak, Recreation Director. We have funded them as we've, as they've been in the last few years. And that is, JC and South Beach are funded from nine to five every day of the year, and Humiston Beach is 10 to three every, every day of the year, except for spring and summer breaks during public school times, which it goes nine to five.
And we currently have no lifeguard station at Con Beach. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if some, I mean, we have a lot of parking there at Con Beach, and the overflow parking across the street. Have there been emergencies that have taken place on Con Beach where we provide city parking that have resulted in injuries or dangerous situations that perhaps Eric or Rob you know of?
There are, there are incidents where lifeguards have been called into those areas. If, if, and most importantly, you've got to remember, as a lifeguard, they have to cover their own areas first.
Right.
But yes, they have been called into those areas if, if they can help out.
Eric, I believe it was you or one of your colleagues who had mentioned recently, had told us about watching as the emergencies take place, when there were the riptides, I believe, was that what the proper phrase is?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and you have seen those taking place and jumped off the stand, and you're there about the same time that the person actually realizes they're caught in one, as they're going out. The same type of tides can take place at the unguarded beaches as the ones where you're sitting right in front of looking at, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Besides Con Beach, do you see other locations within the city that you feel are of a concern that need, actually need to be guarded and yet are not?
Absolutely. If I can just come back a little bit. JC Tower, we can reach Con Beach, and we've made rescues at Con Beach, as far as basically the spires. But we have a blind spot from the spires to, just south of Ocean Grill.
And how many hotels are in that area?
Well, you've got Holiday Inn, you've got, yeah, there's three or four hotel and spa, Ocean Reef Resort, so there's quite a few. Where Mulligan's is, that is, I think, where the first lifeguard tower used to be, and that's where the VBLA feels there should be one, because that's where we had skim jam, that's, that's the up and coming place. I can tell you that we've had three rescues by a civilian just last week, a gentleman who was there at Casa de Este. He was able to go out and get three people in two separate instances. So, yeah, there, there needs, we feel there needs to be actually more guarded beaches, and that one right near Mulligan's and Ocean Grill would be a perfect spot for it.
And I thought of that today, when we saw the representatives from Mulligan's receive an award from us, and they're part of the Holiday Inn, which, as we all know, is slated for redevelopment sometime within the next five years, and the other major hotels that are adding so much to our community with the tourism tax dollars, which are coming from that corridor right there, and yet we're not providing any protection for those tourists. And I can't imagine someone from Costa or from the Vero Beach Hotel and Spa losing their life because they're at an unguarded beach, and we're not providing that for the location where the majority of our tourists are coming from. And I thank you both for answering those questions. I would feel that whatever we can do to add funding in order to more adequately protect our beaches for our residents and our tourists is any, is a great thing for us to do, and I feel we should go forward with methodology to increase funding for our beaches.
Thank you. Sexton Plaza, that would basically, where Mulligan's is, Sexton Plaza, that would create a seamless view from north of JC Park, literally, to Porpoise Point around South Beach. So it really gives us, you know, pretty much the full rein of the four some odd miles.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just, just a comment real quick. The amount of money going to be generated in this, and this is really just an initial start, is relatively small, and I've heard that thrown back, why are you doing it, it's not worth the dollar. But the key is, we've got to find out what is acceptable to the community. This is one of those issues that we are really looking at, and, and we can try to work from that, but this is not going to pay for a lifeguard. I don't want anybody to...
I understand, yeah.
But, but it is a way of generating revenue, and someone spoke earlier about bringing in the private sector. And, and in the discussions that we've had with the provider of this type of service, what we're really looking for is having the local businesses. We think that's going to be his prime market in order to sell these ads. So I, I'm not sure it's going to be anything that's going to be detrimental to the beach, but at the same time, as the lifeguard says, they, they receive, receives comments every day, because I can see it up and down the beach as well. And, and it does provide a little bit of information on the community, again, as long as it's done tastefully.
Paula?
Mr. Mayor, if I will, as, as the miser of the city council, I know you'll all be shocked to hear that, yeah. I would love to see us continue to search for ways to, to raise money and to support our recreation. This, however, for the small amount of money and how, and what it will do to the image on our beaches, I've received numerous calls from citizens saying, hey, you know, are we in that bad a shape that for 13 grand, we're going to, to put this on our towers, leave this up for three-year period? You know, it's not a short period of time commitment. I, I, you know I support the lifeguards, I think they do an incredible job. I think I'd probably rather go do battle with Joe Berdah with the county for tourism taxes because, you know. I mean, that's, they should be supporting our, the lifeguards. Like you said, those are the major hotels, that's where all the revenue's coming from. I mean, hit that again. But I'm afraid I, I cannot support doing this to our towers on the beach.
Any other comments by council? Jay?
You know, keep in mind, this is an enabling ordinance, we're not voting on towers. I mean, basically, what happens is that if, when the issue does come up to vote on a contract on the towers, it has to come back to city council again. So really, this does apply to other, other items, if there's an opportunity for advertising.
Now, garbage trucks maybe, or?
There you go.
That might...
Why not? Doing the go-line buses, I mean, you could.
That's true, but it would have to come to council. And, and you know, the council, the council really does have a responsibility to uphold the image of Vero Beach. I mean, I think we have a very important brand. Vero Beach is a very, has a very high standard of living. You know, I love the Vero Beach, I'd hate to see that a lot of these kind of things happen, where we just start cluttering up our cities. I think we went over something like this several years ago, when the, the high school started doing their things on, on the, on the fences. They, they came through, turned out not too bad. But again, this is an enabling ordinance, and there are going to be times where this, this does fit, and there's going to be times when it doesn't fit, and it will be council that'll be able to, to modify the contracts, just maybe we do it at a shorter time to try it out. Maybe there's advertisement that's just flat-out inappropriate. But this is just an enabling ordinance, this does not say we're going to put advertising on the towers.
Thank you, Jay. This is a public hearing. If anyone in the public would like to speak to the council about the issue, please come forward.
Thank you, Ken Dag, for the record, 1846 21st Avenue. I heard a council member up here, I think it was you, Mrs. Turner, did you say three years? It's a three-year contract?
If, if we go with advertising on the towers. Once again, this ordinance, as Mr. Kramer said, is, you know, is brought specifically toward that tower, but...
But anything that's done will be for three...
I hope not.
Jim, do you want to step in?
The answer, it would be based on the contract, the contractual agreement that we have. I will tell you, in the conversations with agencies that do this, there is a time that they receive, where they get their return on investment, and the three-year mark was one of those times that they were saying that they would get on their return on investment.
Okay, so you already have a company that's going to be doing this?
No, we, we don't, we will do an RFP, we'll do a request for proposals, but we have talked to companies in order to get an idea of what it is that would be marketing.
The next question, because these are legitimate concerns I heard tonight, which I'm concerned also with the banners. You know, I was thinking this would be supporting, you know, our lifeguards to keep them on the beach, to extend the hours, you know, because of budget constraints, you know, and all of the above, that, that anything that is done has to be done tastefully. Because my next question is, is it just the towers, or are you going to allow banners like, I'll use the boardwalk for an example, are banners going to go up on the boardwalk too?
Ken, there has been discussions of banners further places, and I would, I would tell you, the lifeguard stand is not a good venue. I can't imagine of one that, well, I can't imagine that there could be one that would make more sense, but putting it up on the railings, let's say, at Con Beach, I mean, those things have actively been talked about.
I, I would have a concern with that, because I know Mr. Fletcher's been here for a very, very long time in the city of Vero. A lot of you are new, this was, we spoke about this a long time ago, of banners and everything else over on the beach. It can get out of hand, and then folks do have concerns, well, we would look like every place else. And if you want to look like those places, well, go live there. You know, so I would really caution the council, if you're going to do anything at all with the banners on the lifeguard stands, if that's where you're going to go, please do it tastefully. And like I suggested before, let people know that the proceeds go to the lifeguards to protect our beaches. Someone here talked about the tourist tax. As far as I know, we, the city and some of us call it a bed tax. We, that tax doesn't come to us as a city where we can utilize those dollars. So we kind of, we're kind of self-sufficient, we have to do whatever we can to keep our beaches running and things of that nature. But, correct me if I'm wrong, we used to call it a bed tax, they call it a tourist tax, we don't see any of that money that comes to the city. Is that correct?
That is correct, it is a county revenue. Ken, that is correct, and the money is divided roughly one-third to the Chamber of Commerce to promote the community. It goes roughly one-third to the county for beach and sand, which you've heard us not be happy about.
Right.
And the other one-third goes to the golf course, I believe, does it not?
I don't know where the rest of it goes.
But it's divided into three pieces.
Nope.
And back to the banners, too, our beaches, if you look at our beaches, they're pretty wide open, and a lot of people do come here for what we have to offer. You know, they're clean, they're tastefully well-kept. If you want to take a photo, there, you don't have any, like, I'll just use the boardwalk, you don't have banners flapping in the wind. A lot of the motels here, we know some of the managers at the motels, they like the beaches the way they are, the wide-open spaces. I think there were a lot of us out in the community when this was going through, just for you, for your, for you folks, it, they were thinking it was just going to be the lifeguard stands. So just, you know, please use your good discretion on this, because it could really get out of hand in, in the future.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else like to speak? And your name and address for the record, please?
Sue Denenoff, 5125 Wens. You know, I sit on the rec commission, and when we talked about this...
Sue, can you pull that down just a little bit? There you go.
When we talked about this in the rec commission, one of the things that we were thinking about is not just the funding of the lifeguards per se, but they have a laundry list of equipment they need. And we've been going out knocking on doors, trying to get people to donate, but it's a substantial list, radios that, you know, enable them to talk to one another better, kayaks, a storage shed, there's a bunch of stuff they need. So if you, they're not fully funded, is what I'm saying. So, however you can do it, they need our help.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Winger, you the word consistent. It's an important word in the United States, equality, consistency, it's important. The city, a couple of years ago, got very concerned about some advertising, and that particular advertising was on public space. And the city, without going back and checking records, my recollection, where's my, talked to Tammy, because Tammy remembers all this stuff, she's great. Anyway, my recollection is that we told the high school that they had to stop using those fences at public property for advertising. And we gave them a timetable to phase it out over a couple of years. You remember that?
Yeah, I mean, I know that Tim probably remembers it better than I, they were working with the planning department on that.
Didn't we, didn't we give them some time to phase that out?
I think we turned the banners around.
And we gave them some new restrictions, as in color and size, to make it more appealing, more aesthetically appealing for the public.
Right, and, and the point that I'm making is back to, to your point of consistency, and whether or not you allow this on the, on the lifeguards or not, is, whatever you do, whether it's a yes or no, I'm just pointing out that you need to be consistent. Yeah, I, I agree with you on that, and we did, I think this is accurate memory, Tammy. We tried to say, this was over the whole topic of signs in the city, all kinds of signs, real estate signs, signs in front of stores and so on.
It was a major rewrite.
Yeah, it was a major rewrite of the sign ordinance, and we attempted to say, without talking about any specific person, that the signs at the football stadium did not meet the code. I believe that's accurate.
That's correct.
And it wasn't just the football stadium, it was schools.
Yes, and what ultimately happened, as I remember, was it ended into kind of a dissent, consent situation, Brian, whereby they had to put them X distance apart, and they took a good minimum down, and they had to face a certain direction. But your topic of consistent, I think, is accurate, because if we say a school can't do something, then why? If that's your point, I agree with you.
Any other comments from the public?
Paul Tripaldi, 1545 Wind Cove. Just quickly, as many of you know, because I've met with, with everyone at least once, we, my agency does the ads on the go-line buses, and when we were asked to kind of weigh in on this, as already doing it, we, we thought we would help a little bit, obviously. So just trying to give more accurate data, I wanted to just answer to the data on the revenue. The way that we calculated it was based and reported in the paper as only one of the towers' revenue. So the actual revenue should be more closer to about $24,000 a year, albeit that's not a lot, but that's inclusive of our measurements, okay? In best-case scenario, in ads that range from 200 to 300 to 400 a month, that's in best-case scenario, and then taking a range percentage back to park and rec. I think any agency that would be fortunate enough to be involved in this would be proud to say that they're helping something that goes directly to a park and rec line item. And, and I think that I speak for my agency in that, and that we're not interested in it going into, into a contract that doesn't detail that. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is that this vote today is about an ordinance that allows for the city to consider putting an RFP out for contracts of this nature. An ordinance that says that we can consider signs on some city property if we choose. It's nothing about anything specific that's being discussed today, this was just one of the options. And the contract itself would detail very strictly, for example, how my contract is with the county on the buses, what can or cannot be on that bus, and for how long, whether there's a cost recovery period of three years or two years. It's all part of the contract where that's kind of outlined. And then just the last point that I'd like to make is, the actual ordinance, I thought, from an agency's perspective, was written well, because it actually has, if you look in the section that it's been added, 79 I believe it is, the actual ad policy is written into the ordinance. So you don't run the risk of something going on the bus that has to do with a certain religious affiliation, there's no political ads can be put on there, there's, there's no obscenities, no gun advertisements, nothing of a sexual nature, and so on. The list is quite large. It's... It's the actual policy that we adopted with the county. And so it is a very, very strict way of taking a baby step to, like I said before, continue what you're doing, and I'm so happy the picture's still up there, of allowing logo sponsorships in a very controlled environment. Matter of fact, the policy as written in this ordinance doesn't even allow alcohol logos. So what we're looking at here is pretty well-written, and I give a lot of credit to not only the city attorney, but the city manager in designing that. And I think that it looks forward, and it's fiscally responsible to move in this nature versus raising taxes or trying to take money from one coffer and try to put it in another. Let the public entities help you guys. And, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Rob, I do have one more question. What would be the cost of an additional guarded beach in terms of the lifeguard?
Full-time guarded?
Yes. Well, the 10 to 3, for instance, the-
10 to 3, about 100, if you want two lifeguards, about 140 grand.
That's two lifeguards it takes to cover it?
Year-round.
Yeah.
That's when I'm, that's, that's it, 140.
With benefits-
Well, I don't understand-
Well, that's permanent, those are a couple of permanent part-time lifeguards working on a beach from 10 to 3 every day.
A part-time lifeguard is $70,000 a year?
You've got to remember that you're talking about everything that's included in that too. Everything from your equipment-
Equipment.
Insurance.
Exactly.
The equipment is-
You betcha.
Okay.
When you're looking at that, you're looking at roughly 140 grand.
Probably plenty of tourist money for that.
And right now that we know that they're, yeah, that they're undersupplied with equipment, as Ms. Denny O mentioned already, so we know we're not fully, you know, supplying equipment for them now.
The other thing to let you know is they, normally you're, you're always looking at a, a number of about 190 to 215, 220,000 dollars a year for guarding a full-time tower with two guards year-round.
Thank you, Rob.
That includes all expenses.
Mr. Mayor, just one, one other comment. Unless anyone feel that the city is in a position that we have to sell advertising on any public structure, we are not, we do not have that need. This city is stable, has been stable for many years, and will be stable many years in the future. This is a philosophical question, not a money question. If Tracy wants to make a proposal to add more lifeguards, I'll certainly be pleased to second it, and we'll do it with the 272,000 or whatever the number is. I have no problem with that. But we're mixing two things that aren't the same. This is a philosophical question of what we want the city to look like. It's not a question of money. A good argument for money, but philosophically, I don't accept. And I, I don't, we think we should let the public believe that we're in any financial peril. This city is in good shape, it has good management, both at Jim's level and at his staff level, and Rob, and so on. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak to this issue? Seeing no more, I'll close as a public comment. I'm going to oppose this issue myself. I've, I've come to think, as Mr. Winger, as I, I think it looks a little ratty, a little trashy, whatever you want to call it, however you want to do it. As such, I'll make a motion to oppose this ordinance.
I'll second it.
End of discussion.
I have a question. Will this discussion cause the city to no longer allow the signs that are up already? And I believe this would go to-
No, because you all have already approved that when we took the information from the supplier, because they're providing a service. That's not an advertising, that's a service.
Any other comments by the council? Hearing none, let's see where the fallout is. All in favor of rejecting?
We're all in favor of rejecting.
It has to go to roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Winger?
I'm in favor of rejecting.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Turner?
Once again, I'm, I'm in favor of rejecting this ordinance.
Mrs. Carroll?
No.
Mayor Fletcher?
I reject the ordinance.
Motion passes three to two.
Just a comment, just so you all know, and Rob and I-
Thanks for doing a double negative.
We are working on, on ideas of trying to generate these revenues, and so there's going to be a lot more stuff that may be coming to you. We don't take it personal if you say yes, no, or indifferent, but I think it's our obligation to try to figure out alternatives to property taxes. We seem to have a, a major aversion to that.
Certainly, Mr. O'Connor and Rob and, and lifeguards. I mean, I commend you all on the effort, and I know y'all are, y'all are digging hard and trying to come up with some novel solutions and things to help, give us some alternatives. So please don't let this discourage you or whatever.
And also, we have a commission-
And, and you know, I-
Continuing to explore anything.
I, I would like to say exactly, I, I agree with Mrs. Turner totally. You know, we have to decide who we're going to be when we grow up, who we're going to be in the future, and there's going to be lots of questions. I mean, what will be at the corner of, of, where the post office is? What's that going to look like, you know? And as the economy gets better, and as the town begins to grow again, which it's certainly going to do, we're going to have lots of these questions. And you should bring them to us, and we should wrestle with them. And I, I concur with you totally.
Just for your information, speaking of that, we are looking at opportunities for the parking lot down on Ocean Drive, so that might be another little project that maybe you all will be faced with. And again, it's a way of trying to look at revenue-driven.
And also, we have a committee of individuals with our, as an offshoot of the Recreation Committee. And they have looked at these issues, and they are looking at other options. So I, I don't want them to feel discouraged as they brought this forward as a concept that the city council is just going to disregard their other concepts and ideas. And I just want to make sure that, that they feel good about the work they're doing.
We do have some chairs and umbrellas coming your way as well.
And, and the other thing is, is there are, right now, three recreation subcommittees and another subcommittee as well for fundraising. So we're looking at all different options too.
Thank you for your help, Rob. Item B, a resolution of the city of Vero Beach, Florida establishing rates and fees for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclable material and sale of items used for collection purposes. Repealing Resolution 2012, 2014, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date requested by the Public Works.
As you know, this is included in the budget, and it still keeps us below the rates charged by the franchisees in the unincorporated areas.
Mr. Winger?
Sure.
Once again, we did have a rate increase for solid waste back in 2012. We're doing this again now in 2013. Once again, I support trying to build up reserves for our purchases of trucks, et cetera. I'm just wondering if you could confirm what the latest projection is with this increase, then were we covered for, you know, are we going to come back in 2014 looking for another jump?
No, we do not anticipate coming back in 2014 at this particular time. Now, just to put it in scope though, we do have issues where revenue streams and, for example, the franchisees are going up on an annual basis with the CPI. And we may see that there may be some cost adjustments, but right now, we would not plan to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Astrah.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public like to speak to this issue, please come forward. Seeing none from the public, I'll close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to put it on the agenda next meeting.
This will be the final reading.
Well, motion for approval then.
Second.
Ms. Fock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Item C, an ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending Chapter 76, historic preservation of the city of Vero Beach, Florida code to meet the requirements of the Florida Certified Local Government Program, and to make minor editorial changes in the content and formatting of the text, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date requested by the planning director. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm Tim McGary, Director of Planning. I'll be very brief on this. As pointed out, this ordinance was modified, was amended to meet the requirements of the Certified Local Government Program. We've also made some other changes in designation to make it more consistent with law. And unless you have some questions, I suggest we open it up for public hearing.
Thank you, Tim. This is a public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue, please come forward. Seeing none in the public, we'll close the public hearing issue. Anybody have a motion?
I have a question for Mr. McGary. There is information in here about archaeological digs. Will the modifications that we are putting in here affect the old Vero site, which is planning on beginning their dig shortly?
Well, no. Right now, they're not even in our archaeological zone.
They're not?
No, they're right now, they're going to be outside, they're going to be in the Indian River Farms district mostly, and maybe a little on county property, but they're not, they're not even going on county property. So they're not going to even be in this area, okay?
Thank you.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Ms. Fock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. There are no resolutions for adoption without public hearing, and first reading by title on ordinance and resolutions that require further public hearing. This will be October 1st, is that right, Tammy, for this one?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
An ordinance to the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending Section 72 dash, dash 42 and 72 dash 43 of Article 4, Chapter 72, Landscape and Tree Protection of the City of Vero Beach Code, providing for revisions and to permitting procedures for removal of specimen trees and mitigation requirements for tree and palm removal, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date. Tim?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief, just go over some of the key elements of this, it's getting late. Draft ordinance was prepared at the request of the Planning and Zoning Board with the concurrence of the staff to address certain concerns primarily regarding the tree removal permitting process and mitigation requirements. Other than cleaning up some of the portions of the text that needed to be more readable, the ordinance says the following. First, it assigns the planning director the full authority to, to approve removal of specimen trees that are under, for construction. Right now, the ordinance allows the planning director to do that for trees that are make, are diseased, old, or may cause damage. This simplifies it, gets it away from a quasi-digital process. We have strict criteria for taking trees down. There was no need to put people through a public hearing before the board, which would end up with the same result on that. So that will save some money. We also eliminated waivers, the mitigation requirement. We had waivers in the, in the ordinance, which basically was intended to try to take into consideration those lots that had a lot of trees on them. The problem was, it was so vague and broad, not only did it give too much authority to the planning director and the planning zoning board, and that makes a lot of pressure on you when you don't, you don't have any guidelines, but also results in kind of inconsistent decisions. So after a lot of, a lot of debate and dialogue, the planning zoning board would look at different ways to do it. The decision was to come up with some straightforward formula that they thought would be fair to everybody involved. And there was, had to be some balancing act between the property, property rights and the costs. And basically, what they came down to is anything within the setbacks, any of those trees that are protected, and palms, and specimen trees, those you would have to pay the full freight, either one for one inch, and if specimen trees are half for the protected trees. Anything was inside the buildable area, which is inside the building setbacks, there was just a multiplier of a 5% times that. And we looked, I gave them many examples of this, we showed how that reduction, we thought it would be fair. The concerns were, and everybody had concerns that, you know, you would require too much on individual lots that are small, didn't have a lot of room, but they weren't worth a lot, and you would be paying more for your trees than you would for the lot. So we had to make a compromise. And I thought it was a good, a good group that did that. So that was one of the major things we came up at the end. We're also allowed diversity in replacement trees, and this is at the recommendation of the Public Works Ground Superintendent. She recommended that we allow more diversity in the trees, in which we had, which is good for the overall tree canopy when you replace, rather than finding the same specimen you're allowed. A diverse pick of those that you can place in there, using the Florida Urban Forestry Council for Central Florida recommendations. We're also, the minimum tree diameter for protected tree, for specimen trees had to be three feet for, or three inches for that, or three feet, excuse me, three inches. I got three feet on here, I'm getting, it's getting late, I'm getting old. Older as I go through this. But for, for protected trees, we had two inches, we decided to make it three inches when, for that, because we decided they would have more survivability, and that was one of the nice things that came out of this whole thing. And we also looked at the, the height of the trees, the minimum heavy based on the type of tree it was and all that, which was more consistent with what, which it's called for by the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. We're also allow off-site relocation of trees on public property, and that, that was one aspect that they could do rather than onsite relocation. And we've also expanded the eligible activities for the Tree Replacement Fund, and not only take care of evases, but also allow you, in those special cases, we have a stand of trees on a private property that we have to protect for the neighborhood and the public interest that you could authorize use of some of that money to help purchase the property or whatever is needed to be done. So unless you have some specific comments to me?
I have several specific questions, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Well, first of all, I have the minutes of the Vero Beach Tree and Recreation of July 18th. I don't see that there was a vote, but I do react to Mr. Zimmerman's comments, which I'll read as follows. Mr. Zimmerman said he feels that the changes are focusing more on new development rather than protecting the trees. He believes that there will be a lot more abuse of the tree protection part of the ordinance unless the city takes action against both homeowner and contractor or perform the work. He said that Indian River County parties, Indian River County cited both parties. Was there a vote? Is my first question.
Well, there wasn't a vote at that meeting, but that wasn't the final hearing on the, when, when we went to hearings, when we made the changes. They did not take a vote, and Mr. Zimmerman was not as familiar with our ordinance nor the county's ordinance. I, I'm not trying to pick on Mr. Zimmerman, but in the county, on your lot, there, you can take trees down all you want, and you're not having to mitigate on the lot. So I'm saying we have a different type of ordinance. And we do go, you know, you do have to go through and show why you want to take a tree down. It isn't just an automatic, because I have a tree, I want to take it down, okay?
Okay, Mrs. DeSault said in the same meeting, I, I don't know that I pronounced her name properly. She was concerned about the onerous responsibility that it puts on the planning director. Let me, let me go a different place on you. If you look at our neighborhood, we made the decision in the neighborhood when I was on the board there, that we would replace all oak trees with oak trees. You've got to remember that Beachside was an oak hammock, and much of the shoreline was too. So I don't like the diversity of tree. I think an oak tree should be replaced with an oak tree. But let me go a different place on you. If you look at my house, and you'll see that I build around trees, but if you look at the house on Poitras, which came in front of, I believe, Planning and Zoning, if you look at the house in Central Beach that had specimen trees on it, or you look at the, in the Indian Bay neighborhood, there was a lovely, one of the oldest trees in Vero Beach. And those trees were taken down when, my personal observation was that the action was, to some degree, extreme. Now, those decisions were made by Planning and Zoning. But I would tell you that a tree that is 100 years old, I don't care where it is on the lot, needs more than the consideration of, of yourself. I'm sorry, Tim. I feel a lot better about it if the Planning and Zoning Board, and I'm talking only about specimen trees, that's what I'm, I'm saying here. I'm saying if it's a specimen tree, it's in a special category. If it's something that's three feet across, which the, it was more than that, the tree in, in the Indian Bay neighborhood, that needs to be carefully considered. Now, they came to a conclusion, it was a mixed vote, but they came to the conclusion to take the tree down. I didn't agree with them, but at least the tree had a hearing. So I believe this needs to be done, redone, such that if it's a specimen tree, it needs to go in front of a commission, I really do. Thank you for listening to me.
Mr. McGary, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that this had been looked at by both P and Z and Tree and Beautification.
We gave them a copy of a, yes, one of the initial drafts.
Where is the demarcation between the responsibilities of the two separate commissions in terms of these issues?
There isn't. We did that as a, since they've been involved in it, we did that as a courtesy to them to get their input. The full responsibility is with the, the Planning and Zoning.
P and Z?
And, I'm sorry, one other question. You had mentioned that with these modifications, the decision would come from your office specifically, and thereby not allowing public comment or the neighborhood to weigh in?
Well, I mean, it, it, well, the thing is, I can tell you, the Planning and Zoning Well, I mean, it, it, well, the thing is, I can tell you, the Planning and Zoning Board follows, we have specific criteria they follow. Nothing comes out of these hearings that are any different than the planning director doing it. The real question came down, how much mitigation for these? And I mean, there, there's a, there's an issue of much, do you say, well, excuse me, your lot, you can't build your six thousand square foot house, you're only going to get a three thousand square foot house. Well, I'm sorry, but the rest of the neighborhood have five thousand square foot houses. I mean, that's the kind of issues you get into. We had to cut the, cut the baby, you would say, somewhere along the line, we had debates about that. You know, and as I told them, one of the problems we had, the current ordinance, is that there would be, the current ordinance gave too much discretion in there, we needed to have specific criteria that we, we did for mitigation, and that, that was put me in a lot of, in a, in a terrible position.
And I, and I commend, yeah, the efforts. I think that y'all did a great job to provide for the clarity to the area and to remove subjectivity in enforcing it. And I, once again, I think y'all did a great job.
Any other questions or comments for the, Tim?
One of the things it does, and, and we want to make sure we don't miss this, it really streamlines and the applicant is not going through a lot of hoops, and so I think that's one of the things that Tim was trying to do.
And I need to make the statement about whether you should have your neighbors talk about this. I could tell you, in most cases on this thing, this doesn't affect your, you know, this is a private property matter, and it gets into a real problem when, oh, that tree is being cut down, it's going to affect my property. Well, the courts haven't been too, shall we say, too supportive of that kind of approach. It is, from a public interest standpoint, important, so you need to have a process you go through and to show you meet the criteria, but that's one of the problems you get in when you have public hearings, when people show up, I don't want that tree cut down, and that, and, well, what are you going to base it on, you know, the, you know, so, those are things that, you know.
But what's, what's wrong with, if it's a specimen tree, having it go to a commission? I, I don't, why do you need all the authority, I don't, I don't get it.
Well, I mean, we're looking at how it practically plays out. What happens is, the Planning and Zoning Board don't like to have to handle these either, and they said, gee, the criteria is there. I have yet to see them deny this, it really gets down to how much mitigation you're going to apply. Where you get into situations, Mr. Winger, would be where a tree is very close to a building, we've put in some additional language there, so our, our professional on staff, she can go out and take a look to make sure that it's going to last there, because you'll have people say, oh, it's not going to, it'll go, we got to take this tree down. Well, wait a minute, I said, you just don't have an automatic go-ahead to take trees down. And again, it's trying to balance property, property rights versus the, the rights of the public on, on the tree mitigation. And if you make it too much, it's proportionality comes into play, I mean, we're subject to legal challenge.
Any other questions of Mr. McGarry?
Well, just real quick, I mean, the only problem I have with this is just the notice. I mean, if somebody has a specimen tree, if you just notice the neighborhood, I mean, I just remember, what, a couple of years ago, we had the, had the church over here moved a bunch of oak trees.
Right.
I didn't know you could actually move large mature oak trees like that. I mean, at least it gives the neighborhood a chance to save the oak trees or one of the specimen trees if, if that's, I just know there's some oak trees out there that if they got cut down, it would just be an absolute shame, and they're just quite.
Well, I mean, I, I think one of the other things, maybe this would be trying to, Mr. Winger, or, you know, the, that we could set a limit, if you have a oak tree of certain size and age, maybe that would go to commission. I'm not saying I want to do that.
I have no problem with that, that would be improvement.
But I would have to come up with something, and we're trying to make this thing work better, and, you know, we've, both the Planning and Zoning Board and I have had problems the way it works now, and that's why they went through this, this approach. I mean, we've, they did a full discussion of this, I can tell you that. And we haven't had a lot of specimen trees come for us, I can tell you that now.
You had the one off in the Indian Bay neighborhood.
We had that one, that's true.
And it came down.
No, and it was right in the middle, a couple of trees right in the middle of the lot. And everybody else, I mean, that's what you get into, you know?
That's my understanding.
Yes, yeah, and I know, I, I mean, I'm not, hey, I'm just.
Can I make a motion for a public hearing October 1st?
I'll second that motion. Ms. Vark?
Mr. Winger?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
My curiosity is, is were we going to do any amendment as?
If you would like, I could put, I'm not saying, I could put in, as we did before, we could put an option in there if you would like to see that option. That's all I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not going to change the ordinance right now unless you all direct me to change the ordinance, but I'll put an option in there.
Can you bring it back next meeting?
For the hearing.
For the hearing, if that's all right, I'm not, I mean, I'm still making my recommendation despite the, what's been said, but I will do that, you can make the decision on it.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes, with that recommendation.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, since we modified that in the middle, should Mr. Winger have the option to re-vote, or should we open that back up? I just want to make sure legally, we kind of changed it in the middle, and he didn't vote on what we actually voted on.
Thank you for the courtesy.
It's going to public hearing anyways. Yeah, thank you for the courtesy, Mrs. Carroll, I'm a, I'm a doubting Thomas, and I can vote, if it comes back the way I like it, I can vote it, you, you're four to one anyway.
I just wanted to make sure, because legally.
Thank you for the courtesy, I appreciate it.
Five B, an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida requesting, requested by Lichtenberg Corporation of Delaware to amend the official zoning map by changing the zoning district designation from C-1B, general commercial trades and services zero units per acre, to C-1 highway oriented commercial up to thirty units, transient units per acre, containing two point zero six acres more or less, for properties located at six oh one, Twenty-First Street, including a portion of Lot Eight, plat of the estate of H.T. Gifford, Lot Fourteen, Lot One, Oak Part, and the portion of Track A of the, of the replat of Parkview, providing for effective date, requested by Planning. Tim, you still up?
Thank you, this, this will be very short, because this is going to be a quasi judicial hearing, so we don't want to get into the specifics of it, other, it's a two point oh six acre property, the request to rezoom from C-1B to C-1, and basically, as we explained before, this is going to be part of the hotel development property, and this would be allowed to facilitate the hotel property, so I would recommend we go ahead and advertise for public hearing.
Any questions?
Yes. Mr. McGarry, as far as changing the zoning, I don't see any problem, except vehicular sales, I mean, we're not going to have a car lot there.
No, 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 this, no, I can't.
That's an allow, there will now be an allowable use there.
That's true, but.
The plot would have to be approved, so I'll just stop there, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. McGarry? Do we hear a motion?
Move for a public hearing October 1st?
Second?
Ms. Vark?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes, thanks for your patience, Tim.
No, that's all right, I noticed the map never came up there, Tammy, I'm sorry.
It's, you got it.
We know where you are.
We know where you are, even if you don't.
City Clerks Matters?
Yes, sir, I just have a couple items. We have a council meeting that falls on Election Day, and I was just wanting council's guidance on whether or not you wanted to hold your regular meeting on that day.
That would be a morning meeting, wouldn't it?
It sure would.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we, no reason we have to make this decision now, that we wait until October and see how our.
Well, it's advertising, that we have some things that have to be advertised, you know, for public hearings, yeah, so we kind of need to know.
But certainly, yeah, after the first meeting of October, we'd see what we have for the second, I mean, you don't need a whole month of advertising.
Well, I've already advertised some things for the, our meeting on November nineteenth.
I don't see any reason to call it off, actually, to tell you the truth.
As long as we don't get docked in pay.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Not that it'll matter.
I'd like to go ahead with the meeting.
I think we ought to continue.
Early.
And I did have the, the December meeting, but I can bring that back, as it gets closer.
Didn't we cancel that a couple of years back?
We usually do cancel the second meeting in December because of the holidays.
It's probably not fair to the current council members who like to campaign on that day and, and hold signs, I know when I ran for election, I'd like to not have a meeting on that day.
Oh, that's, that's a legitimate concern, yeah, I can, I can see that.
Do our, yeah, do we have any, do we have any objections from those council members that'd be affected then? I didn't hear any.
I still don't hear any. So let's, let's go ahead and keep it for November 5th.
Thank you.
This is really a point of information, we are changing our vendor for our health insurance for employees, it's a savings of approximately a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We have had Blue Cross Blue Shield for over twenty-five years, United was a better bidder this time, where it was difference between eighteen percent increase and a twelve percent increase, and so we are proceeding with the, United to be our provider going forward.
Do you need a motion from us, Jim, or is this just a?
Just, just information, because we're changing a vendor that is so well in place, that I just want to make sure council was aware of it.
Okay, any comments by council?
No.
I'm glad to see any savings you can find us.
Also, just one other comment, this Saturday is the day of caring, and I think we have a couple of council members at least that are going to be participating in that, so.
In what?
And we have the Boys and Girls Day of Caring.
United, like, yeah.
You're participating.
I was, I was traveling in North Carolina and Georgia and South Carolina last week, and I'm participating in everything in the city. Thank you, Tammy.
It's a dangerous thing today.
I'll try to respond to any questions council members may have.
Any questions for the city manager? City Council Matters, old business.
I'm sorry, did we skip the city attorney?
City Attorney, do you have anything?
I do.
She does.
I had a question for the city attorney. We received communication from the Assistant City Attorney, Peggy Lyons, in regard to some changes which will take place October 1st with the Florida Open Meetings and Sunshine Law, and I just wondered if you wanted to give everyone a little background on the changes and whether we need to change our city code in regard to public input at meetings in order to be in line with state law.
Sure, actually, she had been asked to buy the P and Z Board, so she gave them some background about it. And basically what it is, believe it or not, there was apparently public bodies throughout the state that would not necessarily let the public always speak, and there was actually litigation on the subject from time to time, and, and the courts, and actually going back, I think it was around nineteen eighty-three, the Florida Supreme Court had said, the public's right is to attend meetings, not necessarily to participate, because they are business meetings of the governing bodies, actually. Other than, of course, there are certain things that are public hearings without having to even say that, I mean, it, because of ordinances being adopted and things like that, making laws, obviously the public does have a right to participate in that, but in general, there were, there were issues that had gone to court, and the Florida Legislature decided that, well, that's not right, the public should be able to give their opinions and, and address their governing bodies on whatever matters that they're, they're considering and going to take action on. And so they did adopt a, section two eighty-six point zero one one four Florida statutes, goes into effect October 1st. And basically, it's what's called a reasonable opportunity to be heard, and it basically says that any measure that the governing body is going to take action on, the public has a right to speak on it before the action is heard. And it's really, not necessarily even the, the final hearing or the first hearing, but somewhere along the line of the process of measures being adopted, the public has a right to participate and give their opinions. Looking at our own, as you know, historically, the City of Vero Beach Council has had public comment on its agendas forever, as long as I, I know, and Tammy goes back, way back further, I'm sorry, Tammy, she's getting older as the night goes on, but, but it's just historically been, been something that's been done here, and, and our past councils in, in the last few years have, have really opened it up even more and, and directed all the boards and commissions to have public comment.
Because in the past, there was a concern from members of the public that they were not allowed to speak at some of our commissions and boards, and I believe the council made a resolution on that a couple of years ago, and asked that all of our commissions and boards do allow public comment.
And they do, and there are some exceptions, and the big exception is code enforcement, because those are clearly just quasi judicial, there are specific parties to those cases, and there's due process issues, and so the legislature also recognized that in the statute, exempted out boards such as that, and they also look at other quasi judicial. To really be recognized as a party in a quasi judicial, you have to have some kind of vested interests, like the neighbors in a planning and zoning case, things like that, and that's important, the public often doesn't understand that, they need to put into the record anyway why it is they're a, a interested party and they have standing in case they want to contest it. But anyway, the, the way our code is set up, it, it really doesn't look like we really need to change anything to comply, the council has always given the opportunity, and I think that's where, the way we stand, we really don't need to take any action, it doesn't look like.
Okay, and I just wanted to read into the record that the Senate Bill fifty, which was codified in the Florida statutes, notes that reasonable opportunity to be heard is subject to the rules or policies of the board or commission, as guidelines establishing the amount of time an individual has to address the public body or other reasonable forms and or procedures. And I believe our code does state that an individual will have up to three minutes unless given additional time by the mayor.
Right, and, and actually, in practice, we haven't been enforcing the three-minute rule, and that's the choice of the council, really.
It's the tools.
But there's no modifications we need to make, we are in compliance, and our boards and commissions are in compliance.
In practice, there doesn't seem to be a problem at all.
All right.
Anything else for the city attorney?
Old business, see, Mr. Winger, we did the sign for the lifeguards, we also did the city fertilizer ordinance, we took care of the temporary commission, Ms. Carroll's going to take care of that. Individual matters by council members, Mayor Fletcher is going to pass.
Ms. Carroll?
Yes, I would like to announce to the council that I was selected as a member of the fifty-five individuals from around the state of Florida to participate in the Leadership Florida Program. I'll be starting that tomorrow, it's a year-long program, similar to what we offer as, through the chamber with Leadership Indian River County, and this, the Leadership Florida Program is fifty-five individuals from around the state that are going through a similar type of leadership program to develop skills and, and, and learn about all the components that make up the state of Florida, from transportation to economic development to the history and on and on. The program will be taking place over the next year, I'll be attending, I think it's five different sessions from two to three days, and my first day is tomorrow. I'm the only representative from the entire Treasure Coast selected for this year from Martin St. Lucie or Indian River County, so I'll be representing our entire Treasure Coast area at that. And along the same lines, Leadership Indian River County, the seven-session community leadership program offered by the chamber is now accepting applications for their program, which will begin January two thousand fourteen, and Jim and I have both been graduates of the leadership program, and I highly recommend that program, if you're interested, contact Emma White at the Chamber of Commerce. And we have, for the first time that I can remember, a calendar for Vero Beach, for activities for people to do, that seems like it's March with all the activities that are coming up, and I know I'm probably stealing Pilar's Thunder, but I have a list of them, and I'd just like to read that in the record, because there's so many things coming up the next two weeks in the city of Vero Beach. We have Comedy Zone Riverside Theater coming up this weekend, Saturday is the OBA Concert Beachside from six to ten PM. Next weekend is just crazy, on the twenty-seventh, we have the Main Street Downtown Salsa Party, and as well, it's competing against the Cultural Council Art of Networking at Riverside Theater. On September twenty-eighth, we have Riverside Park, they celebrate the Arts Festival all day long, all of the different arts and cultural and civic organizations in town will be having booths, passing out information about all the things to do in our community. Also on the twenty-eighth, if you're up at six o'clock in the morning, the Fire Girls are having their five K run, starting out at South Beach, so you can go to that from six to nine, and then at nine o'clock, go over to the Hands Across the Lagoon on Barbara Bridge, that's taking place, and then you go from there to the Celebrate the Arts Festival, and you can do all these things right on the beach, so we've got your two weeks. I'll let you talk about that.
I'm already passed.
Oh, you already passed. And then on October twenty-first, I'm sorry, October first, is the City of Vero Beach National Night Out, if you're interested in that, you can contact our police department, is putting that on. And you want me to talk a little bit about the MPO?
Yeah, I, I passed it up, I'm sorry.
We did, at the Metropolitan Planning Organization, of which both our mayor and I are the voting members of, we discussed the go-line bus issue and their plans for the year, and we did bring forward that the MPO will be taking a look at the, All-Aboard Florida and how that will affect our community. Florida and how that will affect our community throughout the county, and we hope to, I brought that up as a point of concern, and we hope that we can have a region-wide decision on how we will approach the All-Aboard Florida, as we discussed earlier.
Ms. Turner?
I think our Vice Mayor has done a great job giving us an outlook for the next couple of weeks. We can certainly know where season is upon us. I'd just like to mention that I will be attending the Florida Municipal Power Association's strategic planning sessions next week.
Mr. Kramer?
Just a few things. Spent some time with the buggy bunch with their food truck frenzy. I'm hoping this becomes a regular event, I think it's planning on being, but I know they're going to do this next month again, so be on the lookout for that. I just got a question to ask the council. I know in one of the commissions with the enterprise zones, that they're thinking about extending a part of their enterprise zone out to Felsmere. Each enterprise zone is allocated a certain number of square miles, and we have not allocated all of ours. And so the idea was to extend or take part of that and then put it out there at Felsmere. I'm just kind of asking consensus if there's anybody that would.
Does the enterprise zone have to be contiguous?
No, it doesn't.
That was exactly what I was going to say.
No, it doesn't.
And the only concern I have is that we are the city council, not the county council.
Correct.
And my concern would be if we then approve of its modification out to Felsmere, we then perhaps lose a business that would go to Felsmere instead of into our airport enterprise zone within the city limits.
They're looking for support, or, you know, building a consensus or whatever to, you know, to kind of help push their case up to Tallahassee, so I mean, if I was.
Well, the entire enterprise zone concept is up for renewal with next year's legislature, is it not? So.
I'd certainly like to consider, yeah, the implications of it, but thank you for bringing it forward, and, yeah, I want to talk about it some more.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that, but I will, certainly.
Well, it's on our radar screen, we'll bring it back.
Mr. Kramer, I know you've done a lot of work with the revitalization of our downtown area and moving forward with that. There is a Florida League of Cities University Revitalization Summit. I am unfortunately unable to attend all of these dates. I'd just like to pass this down. If anybody else could go to that, that would be great for our downtown.
But it would be good, good seminars.
Have anything else, Mr. Kramer?
You're just back in a tap.
Friday, I'm going to the Florida League of Cities, one of the policy committees. I'm in the Environment and Beaches Commission, and Jim and I went yesterday to Beach and Shore County function. I wasn't able to stay for all of it, because one of David Curry's officers was giving my wife a ticket for $142. Will say that she, she deserves.
Oops.
You may stay here tonight.
You're going out on a limb here.
It's going to be a late night. With that said and done, what I want to say about the Beach and Shores, by my impression, is they've hired coastal engineering to do, to study everything from how many people put their feet in the water to how many grains of sand there are. And I was reminded by something humorous. Mark Trippson said, you know, the county would be better to spend all this money and just buy some dirt.
Your mic's off. You're lucky you're saved by the mic.
Anyway, that's all I have.
One more thing before we adjourn.